We'll have to meet the Harriman City Council to order before we get started. We'll have a prayer led by the place, lights and flag. Councilman Routh, you listen for it, please.
Yes, please join me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege we have once again to come together as council and as a community. And Father, we're thankful for all of those who attend and for those who assist the city in all the different activities that are ongoing. Father, we're thankful for the privilege to live in this country and in our community and the essence that you be with us tonight and maybe make decisions that not only are pleasing to our people but are pleasing to you. For it's in Christ's name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the real place.
Chris Sager. Betty Holly.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Kenny Mead.
Here.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Here. Motion to approve the minutes of the April 17 meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Russell, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell.
No sir.
Councilman Johnson.
No sir.
Floor is open for discussion, corrections, amendments. Call the real place.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Kenny Mead.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Ronnie Wright.
Motion carries. Motion to pay the salaries?
No sir.
Motion by Councilman Mead.
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly, Councilman Mead.
No sir.
Councilman Holly.
No sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the real place.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Kenny Mead.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Ronnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. This time we hear from delegation. If you'd like to address council, please stand, state your name, limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm a police porter and I'm here for the garden club. It's our 40th or 60th year anniversary and we had an afternoon tea today. I want you to know that this coming Saturday, May 5th, from 9 to 12 at Riverfront Park, they will have their annual plant sale and we'd love to see if everybody's there.
Good. Thank you ma'am.
Hi, I'm Barry Paulson with Gardeners Entertainment. We do the Tennessee medieval fair and we're going to start with a one-minute new promotional video that the garden bars made for us. I saw the good king's sword, King Richard gave poor pardon to Robin Hood.
Grandma, it's not because you.
Of course he's real. I've seen his merry men rob from the rich and give to the poor. And I've seen how mad that makes Prince John. I've seen Friar Tuck enjoy a mug. I even sang a song with Al Mendel. I stood face to face with little John.
Was he huge?
Well...
Where what of it? It's in the night.
I've watched as Maid Marian's honor was with him and it's the royal sheriff of Nottingham as he crossed swords with...
Robin?
Yes, Robin Hood.
Grandma, do you think I'm nothing but a...
You know? Thank you. That's it all? That's it? The day? That's it. A professional videographer in Knoxville paid up for us and he's also one of our pirate festival actors, so very talented. So yes, we start on May 19th and go until June 3rd. So Memorial Weekend is our middle weekend and we did that just in case there's bad weather that people won't wait, they'll come. And so this is our fourth annual fair and our eighth festival on this site. We're very grateful to the city of Harriman for the partnership as an economic development project. It's family-friendly PG, it's outdoor costume event. This time, the time period is the High Middle Ages around 1194 and the historical characters that we mentioned with Prince John and King Richard and Robin Hood. Let's see, the tickets are $17 for adults, $9 for kids, free parking. And as I mentioned before, the attendance in the past has been about 600 plus the 150 people it takes to put on the festival, but the range has been 100 to 1,400. We're really hoping to get more than 1,400 days because then we can be self-sufficient. Let's see, there's about eight acres and seven stages with continuous entertainment like jousting, combat chess, puppet shows, trick shows, comedy shows, improvisational shows, so it's a huge festival if you haven't been and we hope that you will come. We spend about $20,000 to advertise Harriman, to bring people into town and to give people something fun to do here, so it's a lot of effort but it's something that we feel very passionate about and I hope that you all will support it. We really appreciate the promotions that we're doing. I just came from the chamber and we're hosting their after-hours chamber event on the festival site because people will come and they'll say, wow, we didn't know this was down here on all the work that Lars has done to build things. So that's the Thursday before we open, May 17th from 5:30 to 7:00. So we're hoping that city council chamber members will come so you'll see it for yourselves and you'll have a sneak peek with the entertainment. Then also the Friday before we open, the next day, Friday the 18th, you all are helping us record post at the Princess Theater, the classic film, The Adventures of Robin Hood with Errol Flynn. We'll have costume characters there too, so... Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. You may have anything? We appreciate all you all do, we appreciate the partnership and it's not just this time. You all partnered with us during Christmas decorating downtown and working on props and stuff and we appreciate all you all do. We're looking forward to it this year. Hopefully it will stay sunny skies.
Yes.
Every weekend that you go through it.
Thank you. And then if you can have the road maintained before we open, that would be helpful.
Oh, and don't forget the thing on the 17th, there's going to be food and...
Yes, catered. Everything's catered for the city council and the media, in the media.
Thank you so much. All right, if not, we'll go into reports. HEB.
Well, as you know, Bill's retiring this month. I officially assumed his role today, so I'll give his update for now on. In the electric department, we are working downtown to improve recovery time during outages. Been a little bit of work down there. And this summer, we are planning a gas project. We'll be going around to everyone's gas meter and painting them, so you might see us out and about. We're actually going to use some summer help for that project. Every meter needs to be painted routinely for atmospheric corrosion detection. You may have seen our water crews on Douglas Lane. We've been tying over some service lines to a six-inch PVC so that we can avoid an old two-inch galvanized line all through service on that road and allow us to get rid of a line that causes trouble from time to time. And then the sewer department's been especially busy. Several of us at HEB met with city officials at the sinkhole down at the old pawn shop. At this time, just wanted to report, we're planning on repairing our sewer main using trenchless methods if possible and that way we'll avoid getting into the mess really. You may have seen our sewer guys on Emery Street. From time to time, we have a manhole lid that pops off and we've been working to correct the problem that's causing that water flood-up right there and it looks like it's recovering already. So we'll have another contractor down there pretty soon continuing to cut out some roots in a 20-inch main on that street. And a bit of good news we had on the... Actually, the EPA visited our sewer plant and some officials in the Department of Tennessee and a couple of their contractors came and visited us. We were selected, I think only three or four sites in Tennessee were selected to be visited and this was a positive visit. They wanted to seek out treatment plants across the country that were achieving nutrient removal although they weren't designed to do so. This is something we've been able to do using operational changes that don't cost us any money and we've caught the attention of the regulators, which is always a good thing. That's all.
Do I have any questions for Ms. Candace? Again, welcome aboard. We're looking forward to the future. We're going to miss Bill, but as he said last time, you're a lot better to look at. But we're looking forward to it and appreciate the hard work. Carter Parker.
All right, I got two things. You've got the monthly stats in front of you all, maybe there's a copy of that. The next thing is, I want to break up my three captains. I told you about a month or so ago that they went to the fire inspector class and took the commission test. They went ahead and we sat down, we did a lot of paperwork for the state side of it. I have three state certified fire inspectors now. All three captains are state certified and we're building the program now to go out. We're not going to use it to tear people down. We're going to go out and try to help people, make this town safer than what it is for its fire safety and stuff. It's what we're going to use it for. We're not going to go out and try to, you know, tear people's business apart and stuff like that. We want to use it as a positive thing. So I was going to bring on those three guys because they've worked really hard to get them certified. That's all I've got.
Thanks sir. Anybody have anything for the first year?
Did you leave with Drack to answer it?
Yes, sir, I did. We hit him today for about an hour. We're good to go. We worked out a deal there where he was wanting to dump his stuff at. I told him, I said, we can work around that, ain't no big deal. Because we're not going to need the whole piece of that property and I told him, I said, Drack, I said, I'll work with you and he's fine.
Congratulations to you, three captains. Police Department.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you all have the stats that I printed off. They're in front of you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city manager, thank you and the city council for giving me the opportunity to lead the Harriman Police Department. I would like to make council aware of a few changes that we've made this week. Two things that I'm going to be prioritizing on is, first of all, is drug enforcement and also a little more better contact with citizen contact when they come into the police department, that sort of thing. My first official act was I took narcotics officer Casey Myatt out of the rotation and put him back in narcotics. Now, he and I both are actually working the roads this week due to a class that we have going on. After this week is over with, he'll be hitting it hard. And I did have an opportunity, I spoke with Sheriff Stockton and Chief DeBby today. They're in agreement that we're going to start working closely together once again to start hitting the root problem, the root cause of the narcotic issues and not only for Harriman but the surrounding areas around Harriman. Next thing we're going to do is, I've changed the policy at the department. We're no longer going to be closing the front office if someone's out. There'll always be someone at the front desk. If I have to sit at the front desk myself, when someone comes in, they want a police report or what have you, there'll always be someone there to greet them. And I made that effective the very first day that I took over. The other thing is the phone tree. When people call in, I'm having the feature disabled where they can forward that. The phones will begin ringing at 9:00 AM and they'll ring until 5:00 PM. After the sixth ring, if they're on the phone, then it'll send them to the phone tree. But I believe when someone calls into the police department, they are able to talk to a human voice and not talk to a computer. Now, after hours, of course, you know, that option will still be there after hours and it'll direct them to central dispatch if need be. I had a meeting with the Attorney General. We had a great meeting together. We're going to be going by his protocols that he has set for area agencies in his judicial district. Also, he invited me to attend a drug task force in Lenora City, a drug task force meeting, and we're looking at what Harriman PD's role could be with that drug task force to also use another avenue to start attacking the drug problem in our area. And that's the things that I've done this week. Next week, I have training with the FBI. It's already been pre-scheduled. It's a leadership training. I think it will help develop me and what I need to be doing down there at the police department. So I'll still be available if you need me. I won't be too far away, be available if I need to show up. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Appreciate your... That one lady officer coming down by the park the other day, she come, she gave out little badges to all the kids and they really, I mean, there's like 30 or 40 kids down there and they're all loving that.
On another note, on the park down there, spoke with the folks with the camera company and they're looking at that, not next week but the week after to kind of begin. They're building the bones of getting that started as we speak.
Okay, just let me know when I can meet them down there.
Yes, sir.
Chief Oden, I just want to say I appreciate you listening.
You're doing good. Glad you're here.
All right. Appreciate you, appreciate your department and what you all do. All right, thank you. Special events.
As you guys know or hopefully know, we have our swings and wings event coming up. Our deadline for the wing teams was yesterday and unfortunately, we had no one sign up. So we're going to extend the deadline through tomorrow and if we don't get any, or a good number of applicants, we're just going to not do the wing competition. We will continue with the golf tournament as planned and we will just prepare wings for the golfers to have that day. So we're still seeking, golf teams, there's still plenty of spots and we also are still seeking sponsorships if anybody would like to contribute to that. All the proceeds from this event will go toward the Hammur Recreation Department to help with youth leagues. Also, if you guys saw in your packets, I passed out a little spreadsheet of the different events. I realize I've never given you guys any data on how my events have gone, so there's just kind of a snapshot of how things have gone since I started. There's a little bit further data for the farmers market and I actually didn't take over that until last year. I didn't know if that was on there. So 2017 was my first year running the farmers market, but all that information's there and I'd be happy to ask, answering questions on that.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Library.
The sewer is still working great. We've had lots of problems, but we're still doing good. We have had some seeping in of the rainwater to the floors, but I know Kevin's already working on that as they gather, burying it underground, helping to dig the rest of that bad... Hopefully that will take the water probably. So I'm still very, very appreciative. I will be forever. We have new books in the library and that's always important at a library. And the summer reading program starts May the 30th and it goes through, actually July 3rd with a big finale and that's at the Princess Theater for the finale will be held. But there's lots of entertainment. I passed you all, I gave you all the schedule of it. Now, through July is a read-a-thon for the teens and family read-a-thons. So there'll be more reading in the summer, in the July too, with lots of prizes given out. And we have to give a big thank you to Earl Duck because this is the third summer that he has donated to the library. This year, he's given us $1,430 for the summer reading program so that we can have prizes and gifts to give out through the summer to... For incentives and awards for reading throughout the summer so no one gets left behind, so they're ready to go when school starts. Is the whole idea of the summer reading program. We had Mount Piscata come by, high school, middle school, last Friday and I gave matured in the library. And Midtown is coming a couple of times during the summer also. We also have an author, May the 12th, a local author coming to sign books. On Saturday at 10 o'clock, would love for anybody to come by. There'll be books out there to sell too, of course, with the signature. And the lady's name is KB Powers. I have not read the book, so I can't tell you what it is, but I will as soon as I get it. So does anybody have any questions for us?
Saturday at what time?
It's not this Saturday, it's Saturday on the 12th.
Okay.
At 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank for all you do. I'm glad we're getting the problem fixed down there. Dr. Currie.
In working with budget, seeing that we're probably going to come in pretty close to our forecast on revenues this year, that's a good thing. And we've got a few categories a little under and some of them... I think our sales tax will come in strong and so I'm pleased where we are with respect to revenue.
Anybody have anything, Dr. Currie?
Thanks, sir.
I think it's all the departments that's here now. This time we hear from the council, Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
I just got a couple of things. We've got to get some speed bumps down there at Riverfront, right there where the play area is. But I think the speed limit there there is like 10 mile an hour and they're running 30, 40, they're flying through there. And so many kids have walked right there, stepped over that little chain and almost got hit by cars. We've got to do something about that. And I've had some people ask me about the Tempest Building, what we're planning on doing with it. And Kenny, is there any way you could, on maybe on weekends when it's real covered up, if you could get somebody to set up with radar on the back, down towards the end and just at least get onto them and slow them down?
Absolutely.
Because I mean, it's ridiculous how they come through there.
We're back at the park or with the Tempest Building?
Well, I'm done.
You come to the park, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The Tempest Building, you're wanting to know what now?
They were wanting to know what we're planning on doing with it.
Buddy, would you get with the Tempest Building committee and maybe get them to come and give us some update on what we're looking at?
That's all I've got.
Okay. Something, right?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. And as we've hearing from Kenny, Chief Kenny and Candace, I was thinking we should have a cloud of change in top command, even in the fire department, but... What struck me, we're very fortunate that in all three cases, we have people who are quite familiar with the operation, what's going on. I know Kenny's worked with all the departments and Candace also has worked a lot of here in the city on different projects, so that learning curve is kind of short and I'm glad I have that. We're thankful that we're in that kind of position. The only other thing I have, Mayor, at the next council meeting, which will be on the 15th in that workshop, I'd like to discuss a subject that has to do with the creation of advisory boards for fire and police departments. And these would be strictly advisory, the management of those departments will remain the same. So if council decides that we're going to go that way, then the mayor can present the council members to serve on it.
And those will be just committees that will just advise, like to recommend those?
Exactly. They've been very fortunate, I think, and very successful and so...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as I may be out of line, but I would like to express my support for that advisory board. Remember a thing in the past, it always worked well and I believe it just helps bring us closer together in the overall direction of the city. I just wanted to make that statement, I hope I'm not out of line, but...
And Chief Daniels, I'm sorry.
Yeah, same thing. I think it'd be a great idea.
Councilman Holly.
A couple of things. The EPA and the contractors will be here on May the 9th at about 8:30 at the River, at Pepperville sign. They're going to begin work and they're all going to get together and have a kickoff with them and so anybody's invited, wants to come down. It'd be nice if we had a show of hands.
This is what?
9th. They'll be here the 8th. They'll start, the EPA guys will be out on the 8th, but the contractors have to mobilize all their equipment so they'll be here on the 8th. They'll be bringing stuff in all day, the 8th. But if anybody would like to come by and talk to them and look at their plans and stuff, they'll be happy to do that.
What time, buddy?
Hopefully they get there by 8:30. They're coming out with plans and they're coming up on Monday, so... But the EPA's not known for their time limits, so we hope to get there. The other thing is, Engineer Sparkman, the guy that helped us with Princess Theater and with the earlier work on Tempest Building and actually did the designs, stopped by and visited with us last week and spent a couple of hours going over the Tempest Building and went over priorities and things that need, work that needs to be done immediately or first. And then we did find one thing, there's a roof leak that we need to address pretty fast so we'll get on that. It's on the right front side where one of those double valleys come off of the currents and the flat, not plaid, but the steeper. And it's leaking pretty good, so we'll see if we can get somebody up there to fix that thing before it doesn't. It's swollen the doors up on the second floor where we can't even open a couple of them so we could stop to drive it out. That's all I have?
Any question? We appreciate it.
Little first. Little first, great.
No one planned on it, but you know, the mayor, he's, he likes to that sort of thing.
Yeah, come on down, everybody down the way. Looking forward to the May 9th meeting. I'm excited about the, what we're going to be doing down there. I know that Above Plunge Dock, we're looking to put in and some stuff we're looking down there, so a bright future for that property down there.
It's going to be a lot of work. Just to remind everybody, they're going to take about three feet of dirt off the entire surface. It's easier to take it all off and put clean fill on than it is to try to remediate it. So it'll all come off, be all to a Class II landfill, which they've already got a contract with, so yeah, a lot of trucks coming in now, but that's a bigger area.
Councilman Mead.
Yes, sir.
The only thing I have is just to let you all know, city manager has got some illness in the family, so that's why he's not here tonight. And he was in the works, but he'll be back hopefully tomorrow. New business, discussing possibly approve for Fire Department Training Facility on Margaret Drive. As we talked about in our workshop, the Fire Department is wanting to use the property down where the common log used to sit down across from the street department to put a training facility in. And Chief Daniels had told us what all he was going to do. Do you want to touch on it just to...
My plans, they only will be me, I mean, it's going to be me and, I'm being at the Fire Department. It's probably going to involve other departments in the county to make this happen. We have to have two acres of land to be a legit training facility. The first step will be getting it surveyed and, you know, let's start clearing the land. It ain't going to happen overnight, I know that. We'll build a training facility out of Conexus, really like storage containers. These are departments, Greg and Fire Department just done it. I got pictures. I was going to bring them tonight, but my printer messed up, so I didn't do that. But they just built one. I'm working with the railroad right now. If it just gets approved, try to get some storage containers from them, maybe get them free. I'm going to try to do this out of just hands-on work, a lot of it. You know, I'm not saying I ain't going to come to the city and ask them for some money, but right now, we just want to start off ourselves, see where we can go with it, then come back to you all and give you the report as we move forward with it. But I know we can make it happen, it's guaranteed.
Those free storage containers, I bought a bunch of those things when I was at K25 for temporary storage. Those things cost me $18,000 these, so that's a good get.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Russell, second. Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell.
Oh, I think it's great, chief. Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
I really like what you're going to be doing down there. Thank you.
Floor is open for discussion. Just to let you know, chief, we got a councilman here that just got through building the garage, he's in the process, so I know he knows how to build. I want me... and the process, so I know he knows how to build, I won't mention any names, Councilman Holly. He's had all kinds of times, so... All right, have a motion, a second, call her up, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonny Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. That's all we got on the agenda, anything else we can come for this council? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Will you pose lights on?